God said, "If you wanna find out who you are, find the character that you are today in the pages of your Bible." Because what you would have done back then is what you're doing today.
Amen.
It's easy for us to look back. Oh my, if we had been back in the days of Christ, there would have been thirteen disciples. If I was back in the day of Noah, there would have been nine on the ark. If we were there when Jesus was invited to Simon's house and was left unentertained, left there with dirty feet, we would have happily joined Mary. We would have said, "Sister Mary, you take that foot, I'll take this." Brother, sister, you and I have the same opportunity here this morning to make Jesus welcome.
Amen.
Brother, sister, before we can ever have a revival in the church, there's gotta be one in here. Paul preached there in Colossians, the first chapter, "Christ in you, the hope of glory." That's the only hope we have this morning, brother and sister. So, we're so thankful that He made a way for each of us. God bless you this morning. It's so nice to have you here gathered together. We want to thank our pastor, Brother Israel, for the privilege, the invitation, the confidence to have us here with you this morning. And God bless you. We appreciate each and every one of you. So, if you would look back there and see Brother Ezekiel in the back room there with a big headset on. Well, we go way back and he's just a fine, fine interpreter. And we appreciate just all that the Lord is doing here and all of you that have come. So, if you would be so kind as to open your Bible with us this morning, we want to continue our little subject here from last night on the predestinated seed. And we'll be reading here from Romans, chapter eight, starting with the twenty-eighth verse. And then also another place in the New Testament, First John, chapter three and verse nine. So, getting started this morning, we will read here with the twenty-eighth verse, Romans, chapter eight. And we know that all things work together for good to them that love God. How many here loves God? Regardless, brother sister, what we're going through, it's for our good.
Amen.
To them who are the called according to His purpose, for whom He did foreknow, He also did predestinate to be conformed to the image of a son, that he might be the first born among many brethren. Moreover, whom He did predestinate, then He also called; and whom He called, them also justified; and whom He justified them, He also glorified. What shall we then say to these things? If God be for us, who can be against us? He that spared not his own son, but delivered him up for us all, how shall he not with him also freely give us all things? Who shall lay anything to the charge of God's elect? It is God that justified. Praise the Lord. Can you say praise the Lord? Amen. Let's turn to John, First John, chapter three, verse nine. Whosoever is born of God doth not commit sin. And we know Brother Branham's emphasis here on this word, sin, was unbelief. He said, "The adultery, the fornications, the lying, cheating," he says, "that's not sin; that's attributes of sin." He said, "We do those things because we don't believe." So, whosoever is born of God doth not commit sin for His seed remaineth in him; and he cannot sin because he is born of God." Amen. Let us approach the author. For just a moment before we're seated, dear gracious Lamb of God, Lord Jesus, how we thank You. Lord, we wished we had the correct words to really thank You properly, Lord, for that which You have done for us. Father, we ask You that You would help us, Lord, in some way, that we could live tender enough, that we could please You and show You with our lives, our appreciation for the grace that You have extended to each of us. And Father, for we realize that a true Christian walk is not a walk that's based just solely on duty, but, Lord, it's based on love. And through that love, Lord, to show that we appreciate all that You have done and are doing, and even that what You're going to do, for You have promised these things in Your Word. And, Lord, You said heavens and earth will pass away, but never this word will ever pass away. And Father, as we commit ourselves into Your hands, the remainder of this service, we ask Your favors upon each of us. Your blessings will, for we commit ourselves into Thine hands and ask these favors in the lovely name of Jesus Christ. God's people said, "Amen." You may be seated. Thank you again for Your patience this morning. Praise the Lord. Now, we're just gonna jump right in here this morning and I want to read here from the message, "Power of Transformation", preached here in October thirty-first, nineteen sixty-five. Brother Branham says, "Don't stumble at the word 'predestination.'" He says, "If you are a Christian now, a genuine predestinated seed, you was in God before there was a..." You always was in God. The Bible says, and Brother Branham was very careful because of the sensitivity of this word, the reaction he got in using it. He said, "Predestination," he said, "really, the word we should use is foreknowledge." Because, brother, sister, right away, the mind wants to say, "Well, wait a minute, that's not fair." It's not based on God saying, "Well, I'll take this one, not that one." He gave each of us free morality. He knew, because He's God, He's infinite. He knew what you would do with the word when you heard it. But, brother, sister, His foreknowledge goes back. Before the foundation of the world, you were actually an attribute in His mind. There's a part of you that never had a beginning. There's a part of you that is just as eternal as God is eternal. He said, "You could no longer be lost than God can be lost." Brother, it's a powerful subject. He says, "The germ of your life, which is an attribute of God, which was His thought." Brother, were His thoughts expressed? I'd like to poke that down the devil's neck. He says here, "There could be no way for you to fail it, see, because you're growing. And as long as your seed inside growing, you have to produce just exactly what the seed said you would do." Brother, if you're a predestinated seed, we've got to manifest the seed that we are. So, you see, He knew what you would do. He knew what the seed that was you would produce, given the proper atmosphere. So, you see, brother, sister, it's not our works that make us, that give us entrance to heaven. But, brother, sister, the faith seed that lays within us will produce works. Brother Branham said, "The only way you can ever live a life worthy of the gospel is to have the author that wrote the word live it in you." Brother, here are my efforts, our goodness's filthy rags. So, brother, the only thing you can do and I can do is surrender our will and say, "Lord, have Your way." As I said last night, you're gonna come easy or you're coming hard. But you're coming. Jesus said, "I'm not lose one of them. All the Father has given me will come to me." Brother, he's used with this predestination subject, that scripture. And He's also used, "No man can come unto Me, except My Father draws him first." Brother, it wouldn't even be, you wouldn't be able to repent except God gave it to you to do. So, you see, brother, sister, it's not about you and I, it's about Him. It's the good pleasure of His will. It pleased Him. We were put here to please Him. Without faith, it's impossible to please. How does faith come? By hearing. Hearing what? That's why we're here this morning. Lord, help us. See, Brother Branham uses and he brings this analogy here in this message. He says, "You was in your Father," he's speaking here, "in the natural realm. We were made in God's image." He says, "You was in your Father as a germ, and you come forth as a daughter. You, every one of you, brothers and sisters, you come forth. If you wasn't in your Father, then you wouldn't have been here. And if you wasn't in God, if you believed the message of the Bible and the present message of the day, a vindication of it, the reason you're sitting here, because you were predestinated to sit." You wouldn't have been here otherwise. You would have been here out on the street, maybe drunk, some of you, some of you out here running around with some other man's wife. You women out married and running around with some other woman's husband or something like that. But you were predestinated to. Look what he says next. See, you can't help it. He says, "Remember, you was in Him at the beginning; and when Jesus, which is God, the word made flesh and dwelt among us, then you were in Him. You stood the insults that He took. You went to Calvary with Him, in Him. You died in Him. You arose in Him. And now you're seated together in heavenly places in Him." Praise the Lord. I want to take this. This is in this message, the spoken word is the original seed, preached here in March of sixty-two. Brother Branham says, "And a real seed of God is an absorbent for the Spirit." You see why you must be born again? But birth didn't give you the seed. The birth gave birth to the seed. The seed was already there. He says, "All denominationalism is took out. All unbelief is out." A man that's born of God do not commit sin. Why, the seed of God remaineth in you. There's something in you, as you read last night, Brother Branham said, "That controls you to the word." You remember Brother Branham brought this example as an illustration. He said that he had parasites. This is what he said on the tape. He had some parasites following his ministry. He had some borderline preachers following his ministry. He said, "One day he decided to shake them off." What did he use? The word. What did he state? "Unless you eat the flesh and drink the blood of the Son of Man, you've got no life in you." Brother Branham said that he didn't even explain it. This is what he said. He knew he could not shake predestinated seed off with the word. Brother, he said, "Peter, do you not understand what Jesus had just said? The seven he left him. The multitude left him." They said, "This is a hard saying. He's a vampire. What's he mean?" Jesus looked over at Peter. "Peter, will you go?" I could just see Peter had that look like a deer in headlights. Brother, he had a revelation of who made the statement. He had a revelation of the Son of Man. And he said, "Where am I gonna go, Lord? For Thou alone hast the words of the Lord." And, brother, sister, whether I understand all this or not, I believe it because I know who spoke it. This is not the message of a man. Brother, your Bible says in Thessalonians, "For the Lord Himself shall descend from heaven with a shout." The prophet of the messages, that's a messenger with a message to call the bride of Christ. It's a red letter message. The bride of Christ believes it all. Brother, sister, I don't want to be afraid of anything the prophet said. Brother, I don't want to pick and choose the quotes that facilitate my direction. I want my direction to be facilitated by the quote. That's why the prophet of God said, "When you, when you come to a revelation, your statement of faith," he said, "be sure you put a comma on the end of your statement and not a period. Because you're believing all that and whatever else God is going to show." Brother, over the years, no doubt you have too, came across statements the messenger meant or said, and you didn't know exactly where they belonged in your understanding. But, brother, sister, you believed it anyway. And, brother, when you approach it this way, then God, later on, when you have reason to see it, when you bilch, when you bilch your revelation to a place that now you can fit it somewhere, just like we built the church here. There was no reason to have the trusses dropped off when all we had was a foundation. We needed walls up first. God's building a building. We're the temple of the Almighty God. So, He gives a spiritual food into season. Brother, that's why you hear the same message. You might have heard it ten, twenty, thirty times or been through the books or been through your Bible, and yet you come across the same thing. Brother, I've seen it in my own books that I've had highlighted, things that I've seen for years, and yet laying in there is an understanding I never caught before. Why? Because the word of God's eternal. Where are you eating it from? The manna that fell on the other courts, the next day had wiggle tails. It was the same manna under the tipped wings of the cherubs behind the veil in the Shattan of glory. The difference was the presence, it was eaten. When the high priest had a right, that first night the manna fell, God instructed to take up an omor of that original manna, keep it under the tipped wings of the cherubs at the mercy seat, behind the veil. And, brother, sister, every priest that came into the office had a right to eat the original. And, brother, that original never got stale. You could never empty the omor. The more you ate, the more replenished. Brother, sister, this word is eternal. The more you stay in it, the more it unfolds itself. Praise the Lord. When the Holy Spirit comes into that germ of life that's laying there, it produces another seed. Just exactly, another Son of God is born. See, not sealed, born. Amen. Amateur God, Son of God. It's the seed germ like the beginning. You reckon yourself dead, hollowed out, waiting for the seed germ. When was, when, then what is it? It isn't you no more, it isn't man, it's God in the man. It's the seed germ like the beginning, spoken word. What's the message title? The spoken word is the original seed. Brother, that's why we're drawn to it. You've got the other half of the contract in here already. Brother Branham made this statement. He said, "When you heard the eagle food, you left the other thing. You come into the living image of the living God you heard from your theophant." Brother Branham said, "Those of you that are possessed with a portion of that angelic being that resisted the devil's lie in heaven that never fell." Brother, we're acting out here what we already did. We're just living out and manifesting what we already are. Brother, we stayed with, brother, there's a part of you that never fell. You only fell in this mortal existence. There's a part of you that stayed with Michael in your first created image and didn't take the deception or the tail of losing. And you, brother, since you are here with faith, once you are somewhere else, while you're resisting the devil's lie here, you already did it. I knew what you would do with this lie and this word. Praise the Lord. I want to move here into this message, "The Invisible Union." What a tremendous title to a message. This was Brother Branham's Thanksgiving message. We're in the Thanksgiving month. And really, brother, sister, it shouldn't be just one day a year that we give Thanksgiving. It should be given Thanksgiving daily, hourly. Thank you, Lord. All right. Brother Branham, this message, this is a very outstanding lesson here. Let me just take a peek. He says, "He says, 'You separated from your first union by spiritual death.'" You see, brother, a new birth. Brother Branham said that you had to die in order to be born. In fact, he took it so far as he said, "You had to not only die, but you had to rot like an old potato." It's not enough just to come under the anointing. We all love His presence. But, brother, sister, it's gonna drop onto the inside. And, brother, you've got to be willing to die out to yourself, your own thoughts, the world, your previous denominational idea. You've gotta be willing to do it. Empty out, die and rot out like an old potato. He put it that way. What other purposes? God's gonna give birth to this germ of life, this gene of God. He says, this is beautiful, watch this. The new, he says, "You're separated from your first union by spiritual death. Now you are born again or remarried again to the new spiritual union, not your natural life of the things of the world, but of eternal life." Watch this next statement. "That germ that was you at the beginning found you." Brother, it's been laying there the whole time. But it took the presence of God to illuminate it, to give it birth. But watch this. This is, this is an amazing lesson. He says, "Now, your old book is gone with your old union. Now your name in your old in your, has been transferred." Now, we know Brother Branham taught because he was asked the question directly. The last book of life and the book of life, the same book. But, brother, this is November of sixty-five. Listen to what Brother Branham brings out here. You've gotta keep a comma at the end of your statement or your revelation. Watch how he brings this detail out. He says, "Has been transferred." Okay, watch what he says. He says, "Now you say, 'Do you mean to tell me my old book, God put it in the sea of His forgetfulness? You stand perfectly before God.'" Brother, he's bringing out that this first book, the book of life, was your natural birth. This other book you're transferred into is the Lamb's book. Okay, well, watch how, watch how he brings this out. He says, "Your name is now in the new book, not the book of life, but the Lamb's book of life, what the Lamb redeemed, not the book of your natural union, but your new bride." Your new life is in the Lamb's book of life, your marriage certificate. Hallelujah. Where, now watch, "Your true eternal germ from the beginning takes hold." Brother, that Holy Ghost that you took in there as your new birth caused that gene germ to take hold. Brother, there's no one holding that. That is predestinated. What do you say to the adoption of sons? Brother, the elect is predestinated to become an heir. Brother, the rest don't. Brother, if the foolish virgin attained that stature of a perfect man, they wouldn't be foolish. They'd be prime. She's the, uh, the election that wonst, that attains it. Brother Branham gave an incredible analogy of the difference between the wise and the foolish virgin. You remember, he used the simple illustration of a woman with a pattern to make a dress. Notice, he said, "She went to the goods store and bought the material." Brother, Christ went to Calvary. He paid the same price for all of us. He died for the sins of the world, but He knew who would, because a pardon is not a pardon unless it's received. unless it's received as a pardon.
Amen.
He knew who wouldn't, who wouldn't. But brother, sister, he paid the same price for anyone that is saved. And brother, sister, the wise and the foolish virgin are your two saved groups. They're both his children. Brother, look at, Brother Brannum taught under the adoption out of Galatians, that a son differed nothing than a servant, though he be heir of all things. But he's placed under tutors and guggers to the appointed time. Well, brother, sister, look, he taught two sons. And remember, he brought out how that the sons that are born in the family are put under tutors. And he says that tutor, the Holy Spirit reports back how the son is doing. And brother, Brother Brannum gave it great detail. He reports how that, well, this son, Lord, he's your boy, he's born in your family, but he's not that interested. He's just not that interested in your business. And then the other son was the one that was interested. Well, look, brother, sister, they were both born in the family. But not, both of them became heirs. One was adopted, one wasn't over the father's business. Yet, he loved them both, they were both his children. And he says, "The son that wasn't adopted remained his son." But brother, sister, we're here this morning to be adopted. Well, brother, sister, it's laying right here in the Word of God. You can find out where you're at in your walk by the Word. What are we doing with it? How interested are we?
That's right.
What's number one in our life?
That's right.
Look at this. He says, "Your new life is in the Lamb's Book of Life, your marriage certificate, hallelujah, where your true eternal germ from the beginning takes hold." Now watch this next statement. This is beautiful. Now, now, see now, look. That gene that was laying there has been illuminated. It's absorbed the spirit, birth's been given. He says, "There it took hold, right there your name's transferred, out of the old book into the new. Now, you're not only forgiven." Now, brother, sister, we never, I don't believe the prophet God is downplaying being forgiven. But he's letting you know there's more. There's something beyond being forgiven.
That's right, amen.
Brother, we all ask forgiveness every day. The Bible says, "If we make a mistake, we have an advocate with the Father to say, 'Lord, forgive me, Lord, forgive me.'" Daily, "Lord, forgive me." Brother Brannum said, "We're not exempt from mistakes." He says, "But a true born-again Christian, when you make a mistake, right quick you'll make it right."
Yes, amen.
Why? Because there's an intercessor in here. When you make a mistake, it tells you. It'll keep staying right on there until he take care of that thing. Is that right? Brother's the most miserable Christian you'll ever meet. One with one foot in, one out. Look. You're now, he says, "You're not only forgiven, but you're justified." He says, "Glory, justified." Romans five one, "Therefore being justified by faith." Look the Word up. The Word don't mean forgiven. The Word means justified. Justified, listen what he says. But the word justified is though you never done it. Amen. It's not even regarded at all. How is it done? In God's Book of the Sea of Forgetfulness, your old book and marriage is divorced and dead. It's not even in the memories of God. It's so easy to conclude the accuser of the brethren, the one that's accusing you. Brother, you know what? I heard this testimony, a dear brother that was close friends with Brother Brannum, a fellow minister. He spoke to Brother Brannum how that before he got saved, he wasn't always, of course, a Christian. And he said periodically, "The life I lived, the mistakes I made, they come back to me, bring me under convictions, guilt." Has that ever happened to you? He said, "When that happens, Brother Brannum, I immediately ask the Lord to forgive me of those things. But periodically it comes back." Brother, he's a tormentor. Saying it's a tormentor, he's the accuser of the brethren. Brother Brannum told the brother, he said, "Brother, every time that happens to you and you repent, it's the first time God's ever heard that, because he forgot it." He says, "It's not even in the memories of God." Amen, you're justified. Therefore being justified, look what he says, "It was accused, you was accused." Well, he's the accuser. Well, brother, sister, look, he's reading out of the wrong book. He's reading, Brother Brannum goes on to say, "Everything you do in this life is recorded in the first book." Well, brother, the devil's responsible for the first book. You came through his substitute way, through a sex desire, a life of death. And everything you do in this flesh is recorded. But brother, once that gene germ takes hold, your name's transferred. The devil's still reading out of the first, brother, he can't read out of the Lamb's Book of Life. There's nothing in it. You never fell in that book.
Hallelujah.
It's clear, it's clean, that's where you're transferred to. You're not careful, you're going laughing. You get happy enough to say, "Praise God." The devil comes accusing, laughing in his face.
That's right.
Wrong book.
That's right, amen.
I'm in this one.
Amen.
Look at. You was accused. You never done it in the first place. The old union is in the sea of God's forgetfulness. You wasn't married to it to begin with. He, the bridegroom, bore your shame himself for you, in your place. He took your place, for you were predestinated for him to be in his bride before the banation of the world. The Bible said so, you are the predestinated seed. Go back to that little illustration Brother Brannum gave. He said, "The woman purchased the material. She paid the same price for the whole material." The wise and foolish, they're the same material. This is what he said. "Her sovereignty chose where to lay the pattern. And what separated it was a borderline." He said, "The material that is cut away from the pattern is not lost. She saves it because she paid for it. It's good material, but it's used as an accessory for the dress. It's a byproduct of the dress." It's beautiful. You and I didn't choose ourselves, he did.
Amen.
That's why the prophet God said, "I feel sorry for my enemies." Brother, sister, I tell you, as this gets more real in our lives, then the grace of God will become more real to you. You'll look at people differently. You won't look down your nose at somebody that maybe doesn't see what you see. The only reason you were given the revelation of it because of the gene germ laid. Brother Brannum said, "That when he asked his disciples, who do men say? 'I am the son of Manam.'" And he got answers. Some say, "You're Elias." Some say, "You're Jeremiah, one of the prophets." Well, Peter, who do you say I am? Thou art Christ, the son of the living God. Look at what Peter, Jesus response to Peter's revelation. He said, "Blessed art thou Simon Barjona." He didn't say, "Because of what you just said." He said, "Because my Father, which is in heaven, hath revealed that to you." He said, "Right there, Jesus knew that Peter was predestinated seed. He said, "He handed him the keys to the King," right there. He wasn't even converted yet. Did you know that after that, Jesus said, "Peter, when you're converted, strengthen your breath"? Look at, there was predestined seed there. He received the greatest of all revelations, ready for God to him, to recognize his day in the manifestation that stood before him, wasn't even converted. He was converted at Pentecost. That's where germ seed absorbed the Spirit and produced a new birth.
Amen.
After that, you know, Peter had denied Christ three times after he got the greatest of all revelations. That's a good message for us matches message, folks.
Yes, that's right.
Brother, it's not enough that you believe God's in a prophet, that you even believe what he said. You must be born.
Amen.
Brannum says, "Peter, right there, Jesus knew that given the opportunity, that he would receive the Holy Ghost." I just read, "That germ of life illuminated, it controls you to the Word. It's drawn to the Word. It'll draw you to it. It draws the Word."
Yes.
He says, "You're a sinner to begin with." Brother, every one of us needed a redeemer. Because you were a sinner to begin with, that's right. You was deceived into it. You had no, no, you, it ain't your fault. Brother, this is God looking at you and I through his mind. You never did it. What? Because that little germ that was in you was to be you before the foundation of the world. Put your name in the Lamb's Book of Life. Look at the next statement. "Like my little eagle story, all of you have heard it." Brother, when did the eagle become an eagle? It always was an eagle.
That's right, amen.
It was in the shell an eagle.
Yes, amen.
The genetics that were in the shell were eagle gene.
Yes, amen.
Brother, that mother eagle knew it was missing an egg. So brother, sister, it flew over all those barnyards looking for its eagle. And when it spotted the oddball, it spotted the eagle in the barnyard. It let out a scream, an eagle scream. All the chickens looked up. The eagle looked up. But the chickens weren't that interested. It just didn't call. What, there was no eagle gene. So they went back to pecking in the barnyard. But the little eaglet kept looking. Why, it was a deep calling to the deer.
Hallelujah, amen.
My sheep, Jesus said, "Oh, hear my voice." Not the voice of a stranger, my voice. Brother, we've heard the voice of God, it is a, that's why we're here. He wouldn't let you stay in a barnyard forever.
Hallelujah, amen. Thank you, Lord.
God put your name in the Lamb's Book of Life. My eagle story. Okay, listen, this is beautiful. He says, "Let," same message, "let a real, predestinated, born germ." Is that a statement? Let a predestinated, born germ, predestinated by God, hear the Word of God, it's music. He knows it's the truth.
Amen.
He's tired of all that denominational stuff. Join us, come go with us. The anointed word of God being vindicated before any man that's born to be a son of God with the predestinated germ into him for this hour. God put a germ in you. He gave a message that matched that germ.
Hallelujah.
That's why, brother, he could bring this message, take his prophet off the scene. And he knew every predestinated seed that was out here would come to hear that voice.
Hallelujah, amen.
It would give it birth. And it would come to him. That's why you can't deny any word. That's why when somebody says, "Well, he made a mistake here in his teaching there." Brother, they got to me too late.
That's right.
Brother, you're to visit today, even those that have pulled out of the message and come back to persecute it. You know what they don't criticize or they don't move into is the vindication. They'll take something here or something out here, a hunting season or something that you don't find a direct statement in the Bible. But brother, sister, the vindication is infallible. Brother, you go back into those early publications by those renowned Pentecostal men, that when Brother Brannum came on the scene, these men left their own ministries to follow him and to write, brother, they wrote books about it. They'd never seen anything like it. In fact, it was Lindsey, he wrote in his book, "If there wasn't so many infallible proofs, it could be concluded this would be far-fetched." But they witnessed it with their own eyes. Now they never
Yes, amen.
Took hold of the message. But they did take hold the vindication of that sign of Messiah. That was the second sign, brother, right here, okay, I'm going to see. Our messenger receives there a visitation from God's angel. And the angel says, "Remember how it occurred? The pillar of fire came in, threw a light on the floor. And he heard footsteps and an angel walked in. And the angel said, 'I've been sent from the presence of Almighty God.' And the first thing he said to it was, 'Fear not. Don't fear. I've been sent from the presence of God to tell you about your peculiar birth.'" He begins to explain to the messenger how he's going to be sent to the world, pray for the sick. It had already, well, they had already been declared, of course, that his message, that he would forerun the coming of Christ on the Ohio River. But in that visitation, and Brother Brannum hears all this, he said, "Well, sir, I'm..." he said, "Well, sir, I won't be able to do that." Now, brother, doesn't that sound like a conversation you remember in your Bible at a burning bush? The college prophet.
Yes, yes.
Brother says, "I'm uneducated. They won't believe me." Brother, right there, when that angel said, "As Moses..." "As Moses." Brother, you're talking a prophet to the age. You're talking about an office that God speaks lip to ear with. You're talking about an office that wrote the first five books of our Bible. He says, "As Moses was given two signs, you also will be given two signs." Brother, right there, that prophet's vindicated. And those two signs went forth unlike anything anybody had seen. In fact, Lindsey wrote in his book that we have not seen a ministry like this on the earth since Jesus walked the shores of Galilee. Brother, I'm gonna believe what this man says.
Amen.
Why would I believe anyone else over this man? Somebody says, "Well, he made a mistake here," what? First of all, where's your vindication?
That's right. Yes, that's right.
This man's vindicated.
Yes, amen.
That settles it for me.
That's right.
Brother, there's no such thing as an eighth messenger. Not in my Bible. Brother, you try to take a member of the fivefold and raise them up amongst the others, you've made an eighth messenger whether you believe it or not. Brother, that fivefold ministry has an absolute to the age. And that's the seventy church age messenger's message. Brother, your peculiar birth, this isn't, wasn't in my thoughts, but it's here now. Brother, his peculiar birth, you remember when the prophet of God, as an unconverted gay warden, got up on the bus? Remember the story?
Yes, yes.
I trust you've heard that. He speaks of it many times. And that she was an astronomer. Worked for the White House. God permitted that lady to see the light over his head when he got up on the bus. Now, brother, sister, think about this. This happened many, before he was converted. And that woman begins to talk to him. And he ignores her. He said, "Oh, there's one of them funny." Remember, because he'd been called out as a boy at the carnival by a medium. And said, "Excuse me, you in the striped sweater. You know there's a light following you? There's a sign following you? You wanna know what I'm talking about? It's in that picture." Brother, sister, think about this peculiar birth. Here's a woman on a bus, an astronomer, a stargazer. She was a modern-day Magi. Studied the stars, knew that God wrote his first Bible in English. She wasn't even a message believer. So there she is. God's prophet, not even converted yet. Lights following him.
Yes.
That wasn't the first time he followed. You go back, Brother Benham talks about his peculiar birth. Do you remember? He was born there in the dark? And he's newly born. He said, "We didn't have windows like we do today with glass." He said, "We had a little door on the wall." And he went over and opened it. Pillar of fire was waiting at the door. Oh, a big door, because the door Oh, now, now I'm moving into fanaticism here. As you can tell, I'm feeling very comfortable. Little door on the wall, opens it, pillar of fire comes in, hangs over that baby. You're gonna tell me he taught wrong? Who showed up in your birth? Pillar of fire came in, hung over that child. He said, "In between those two denominational niggas and ages, oh six and fourteen, God set the open door." He said, "What was it? The supreme deity of Jesus Christ, God himself dwelling amongst us, made flesh amongst us, sets the door." Glory, hallelujah. A woman on the bus says, "Don't be like that." Finally, she says, "Do you believe I can tell you when you were born?" He said, "No, I don't." She said, "You were born April the sixth, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh nine." Brother, that man, Brother Benham was turned back. He said, "How did you know that?" Look at his question. "I want you to tell me how you knew it. Tell me when the sailor was born." "I can't." Of course, there's no light over his head. Brother, think about it, just bear with me a moment, and I'll pull over. But here's a woman. She already knows the date, because she tells him how she knew. She said, "Sir, I'm an astronomer. I work at the White House." She says, "Are you familiar with the Magis? That followed the star? As a sign that Messiah was on earth?" Oh my. She says, "I'm one of them." Brother, she already knew God had done something special, because she said, "God don't do nothing on the earth till he shows it in heaven." But it says, "God's first Bible," he says, "the Zodiac. He rode it when he created it, out of the pillar of fire. Not all this universities, orbits, planets, signs in the skies." So here, brother. She looked at the boy, the young man. Well, his age matches. Think about it. There's a light over his head. He's the right age. "I can tell you when you were born." "Nineteen oh nine, five in the morning." "April the sixth." "How do you know?" She said, "Well, I'm one of them." And see, planets lined up two thousand years ago. That's what the Magis followed. She's telling our prophet this. She goes, "After that event, those planets went out of their orbit, out of their alignment, and never aligned again until April the sixth, nineteen oh nine, at five in the morning." She says, "As in commemoration of the greatest gift God ever sent the earth, he lined those up on your birthday." She said, "You'll never be successful in the East. You were born for the West." Isn't that amazing? That God moved him out here.
Yes.
Brother. Brother, God's need this boy. Brother Benham on the tape said, "This is a beautiful lesson, brother, sister." He said, "He called Egypt denominational Egypt." That's what he called it. Because you watch Brother Benham bringing all these Old Testament experiences and things that took place, manifested. He always brought them over and ended up showing them present tense. Identifying them, present tense. He said, "God came down, spoke to Moses, and God said, 'Look, Moses, I've heard the cries of my children.'" Because the children of Israel were in bondage in Egypt. It was a type of God's true seed in bondage in denomination. He said, "I have come to deliver them, but I'm sending you." So who's delivering? "I've come, I'm going to deliver my people in bondage, but Moses, I'm sending you." When Moses said, you know, I had bad speech, and so we know what took place there. With God saying, "For then use Aaron as your prophet, and you'll be as God to him." Brother, they had no Bible to compare. Yet God gives him two signs, vindicates him, sends him down to Egypt. And Egypt had their impersonators. But you notice that Moses's serpent ate theirs. God's prophets vindicated. Well, Brother Benham makes this statement. So Israel comes out of denominational Egypt entirely. So look at, brother, sister, this is not, what I'm about to say will never be popular, but it's the truth anyway. Because, brother, this multitude that came out, all Israelites, following the same message as a same group out of Egypt. And brother says, "In the journey, some of Moses's old brethren..." Brother, they were message followers. At a point in the journey, rose up, and Brother Benham puts it on the tape, "tried to prove before the people where Moses was wrong." Their names were Korah and David. And Brother Benham makes this, he goes this far. He says, "I believe that Korah was sincere." That's what he said. "But nonetheless, he and his congregation were swallowed up in the earth." So brother, sister, remember, spirits don't die. We've seen a repeat of history right amongst our own message. What Brother Benham was fighting and identifying there to us back sixty years ago amongst the denominations and what the message he was bringing, those spirits have moved up and claimed the message, at least for a season. To try to deceive God's children. To try to, brother, think about this. You've got a vindicated prophet with the message to the last age to restore back all the loose ends, to reveal the back part of God's mind, to dress the bride of Jesus Christ. And then somebody stands up, a clergy stands up and tries to put a shadow, a wave of doubt over something that prophet taught. Well, brother, sister, that's the highest form of Rikleatonism I know of. The denominations aren't gonna deceive us. But what are you doing? You're putting yourself in a position to judge where a prophet missed it or didn't. You're putting yourself in a higher order than him? Brother, that's a Korah. It's the spirit of Korah. It's a tragedy. What we're witnessing right amongst us. People will take the word over some website of someone unvindicated over a vindicated prophet. Brother, what it shows me is they never really had a revelation of really even what a prophet to an age is. Because, brother, sister, look. My, my time is up. Aren't you thankful that God put something in you?
Amen.
To believe your day and its message. Brother, sister, I'm not wondering. I'm not wondering who's got the third pole. Already know. It's already been vindicated. The angel told him, "There'll be no person impersonating you. Look it up." Brother Benham used the word mimic. Satan impersonated the other two poles, but this one won't be impersonated. Look up the word mimic, it means any copy. Nobody else will copy it. It's office-specific. To Luke seventeen thirty, Revelation ten one through seven, and Malachi. God already gave his bride the preview of the coming of the Son of Man. So she would know how to dress herself and speak. Okay, I'm gonna quit here, let me just, I wanna take these two little spots I've gotten the same message in this venue. He says, "Notice the anointed word of his day, which you are a part by predestination. You immediately like new." Brother, I was a sinner boy. I met a precious friend of mine, you might, some of you might know him, Brother Rod Rhodes. We were both teenagers when we met, working in the grocery store. And one day, Brother Rod said, "Hey, Bob, my church is gonna have some movies on Friday night. Would you like to come? You know, God knows how to get you there." Well, I grew up, I'd gone to a couple of Mormon dances as a teenager. The Mormons had dances, and I said, "Well, Rod's church has movies. Double feature." I said, "Sure, Rod, I'll go." I saw two movies, Twentieth Century Prophet and The Deep Call of Duty. Little did I know, I was enticed, a little woman at the well. Brother says, "She knew." He said, "You know, when Brother Benham identified predestined seed, the number one example he gave was that woman. Because here she was stooped in sin. Nobody would ever guess she was elect. That there was an elect germ laying there. Living sin. Ill-feigned woman. Brother, that was a message to all of us. Brother, you can never wrap your head completely around the grace of God. Brother, for years, I struggled, Lord, you could have found a better man. He could have, there's way better men out here. But brother, it has nothing to do with election. He loved Jacob hated Esau before they was born. And I was watching the film. And brother, sister, here I was, just a sinner boy. Didn't know nothing. But I knew what I was seeing was God revealing himself in a man. When he told that little woman, he said, "Now, sister, that's not me speaking to you, it's just my voice." You listen to what he tells you. Brother, that was the Messiah's sign.
Amen.
That's with the little woman at the well, she said, "Well, I perceive you're a prophet." He told her about her life, read her heart. She said, "When the Messiah comes, he'll do what you just did. I'm he that speaks to you." Brother, she grabbed her pot, went through the city, "Come see a man." The prophet of God said it didn't take her ten services. That's what he said on the tape. Take her ten years. There was a little predestination. And brother, sister, I left that film. Brother, I've never been, that was forty-two years ago. I've never been the same. I'll never forget, I went home, I was raised in the Lutheran church till I was twelve. Enough to time to go through the confirmation classes. So my mother had bought me one of those little dollar hard-bound little Bibles to learn my memory verses out of, as a boy. I come into the house, I was living away from home. I walked into my house, headed down the hallway, and the scriptures that were referenced there, brothers who had gotten up and referenced some scriptures to what we were seeing. And I said in my mind, "Boy, I'd like to read those." And walking down the hall, and in my mind, I think, "I wonder where that old Bible is that my mom got me years ago." I walked into my room, turned the light on, and it was sitting on my nightstand. Brother, sister, I've been going to church ever since. I had friends, like people that said, "Oh, it's just a phase you're going through." Well, I'm still Well, I'm still in it. Praise God. Don't you love the Lord? Brother, sister, we all know we're not what we ought to be, what we're gonna be, but don't you thank God every day that you're not what you used to be? Lord, make me more like you. Paul said, I die daily. Brother, sister, regardless of where we're at in our walk, and remember, there's eleventh hour workers. Maybe somebody's not been in this as long as you. Don't matter to God. They get the same penny in an hour. Same penny. Brother, I'm just excited, I, I, every time I see somebody come in, Lord, is it the last one? One of these days, it's gonna be. When that last one comes in and is splashed, the pause button comes off. Seven seal picks up and continues and finishes. And brother, it's gonna move from a shout to the voice of the archangel. Amen. We'll get a body change. Some of you won't ever die. Some of us won't die. God, brother, sister, in restoring Eden, he's gonna be sure that there's a little remnant, a few here in the very end of this that don't even. Can you imagine? You're gonna sit at the wedding supper with the seven ages. You're going to be amongst the only ones that never die. Brother, I wanna be ready, don't you?
Yes, amen.
Brother, sister, it's an hour to quit the foolishness. It's not an hour to keep sliding backwards.
That's right.
We need to be moving forward.
Yes, amen.
Amen. Would you stand with us? Thank you so much for your patience this morning. God bless you. Brother, you know, all that's happened over these last few years, and here you are standing and believing in God's word. Look how many different directions you could have taken. Look how many folks you've walked with at one point that's no longer walking with you. Because there's a little germ, a little gene of God that has controlled you to the word. Musicians, would you come? Thank you, Sister Sharon. Thank you. Let's just, if you would be so kind, to play a little something. Let's just, for a moment, before we turn the service over to Brother Israel, let's just bow our heads if we would, please. Close our eyes. Sometimes, brother, sister, I, I know I don't really sometimes realize what God has done. Look at all the trials, all the tests that he has brought us through. And here we are standing this morning as overcomeers. By what? The word of our testimony and the blood of the Lamb. And brother, when we do make a mistake, which we all do, we have an advocate with the Father. And immediately, they ask Brother Benham, Brother Benham, how, how long does it take the Lord to forgive us? Because you know, brother, sister, there's times when we've maybe made in our minds a greater mistake than usual. And that thing will beat us up for the longest time. It'll hinder our faith. Brother Benham was asked, how long's it take the Lord to forgive us? To forgive you when you ask. And prophet of God said, just as soon, just as soon as it leaves your lips. And brother, sister, there, as an elected believer, you're not only forgiven, you never did it. Oh, brother, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. That's the power of the blood of Jesus Christ. God actually forgets our sin. What did he say? I will remember your iniquity. Brother, that even goes a step farther. Because iniquity is that you knew better. That's after you become a Christian. You knew better and you didn't. But brother, put under the blood, he said, I'll remember your iniquities no more. To stand, brother, sister, sinless before God. Amen. Praise the Lord. I'd like to ask this morning, as we're in divine presence, is there anyone here, well, there's already some hands raised. I always appreciate that. You know, no matter what language, what culture, what country, uplifted hands is a universal sign of surrender. God bless those hands that are raised here. I'd like to ask this. Is there anyone here that you know that you need this born-again experience? My God bless those hands. Well, brother, sister, he's here to fulfill that promise in your life. Now, I wanna ask before we go to prayer, is there anybody here who's been born again? Yes, your lamp's been filled, but the circumstances have laid. You find your lamp has gotten low and you need it refilled. My God bless those hands. So you see, brother, sister, every one of us have a need this morning of more of God, more of his presence. Heavenly Father, Lord, you see the uplifted hands throughout the building here this morning? And Lord, you see the humble heart that caused those hands to go up? Father, those that are seeking this new birth, this baptism of the Holy Ghost, Lord, would you grant their filling of the Holy Spirit? Lord, put something deep inside that won't let them rest, completely gain their night until they come to that place that they know, that they know, that they know they have been born again. Lord, for those that lifted their hands for a refilling, would you this morning, Lord, refill every cup? Father, may it be so full that it flows over the edge, down into the saucer that we're drinking from the saucer this morning? Father, would you bring to pass your word? We ask it this morning, as you have promised, in the precious and lovely name of Jesus Christ. We thank you this morning, Lord. Amen. Brother Israel, if you would come. Praise God. Praise the Lord.